So.
Okay, move.
I call this meeting of the town planning commission for Tuesday, December 16th, 2014 to order. First order of business will be the approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion?
If.
Would we just like to add that little.
Well.
As under other business or under mail? We'll discuss it.
Why don't we discuss it under other business?
Okay. So that would be the only amendment?
So that would be, item D would be membership of the planning commission.
So I'll move that we amend it with that in mind.
And as amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Let's look at the minutes of the meeting of. We have two minutes, two of them.
We had a table that one last time, remember?
Because we didn't have enough voting.
And you still don't?
And we still don't. Rick is here, Julie here, Jim's here.
But Doreen was here too as an alternate.
Doreen was here, so that she.
So you do have four.
We do have four, alright.
So you four can look at these October 21st. Right, I know that. We can comment editorial wise.
Please do, because.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of October 21?
Uh, yes, I'll move.
And there's a second, so is there any discussion, changes, deletions, additions, corrections?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the minutes for October 21 as circulated, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Mike and Sid abstain. Turning to the minutes of November 18. Blake was here for that meeting as a guest. Doreen and Rosemarie were stricken with illness. Uh, is there a motion to approve the minutes for November 18 that we can comment on?
Move.
Okay, Mr. Winchester's moved it. Is there a second?
Second.
I have to tell you, I numbered my page two as number four, so I have to correct that one.
What, um, just a question under guests with Blake here, the last sentence, I worked with the Pondel Fair, Pondel Valley Park. Who did? Blake?
Blake.
Yes.
Okay.
A long time. I don't think that needs to be changed.
No, it's, it's okay. Any other changes, alterations, deletions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I abstain.
Abstain for Doreen.
Okay, that one came first. I'm sorry, the last one, Rick, number two, Natalie's team landworks, her voice was sent. Since no other writing information, suggestion was me to review the town plan and check to see what sections need minor updates. I think it was decided at the prior meeting chaired by Rosemarie. No, this is that prior meeting chaired by Rosemarie, that there was discussion of going back and going over the goals again while we're waiting for the grant process to finish.
Yes, because Natalie asked us to be more specific about our priorities. So we were, it came to that meeting, well, the last meeting with five priorities, and then we decided to possibly look over the notes we had already had.
Because we had already done that work. Should that be reflected in these minutes?
Uh, probably so, in answer to that, yes, in answer to number two, it probably should be, in reality.
Okay, do you have a proposed?
I propose that we amend, uh, number two under other business to reflect that the, um, that the chair, Rosemarie, had asked via Natalie Sheen for us to reiterate our five top goals and then come to a consensus as to what those goals were in preparation for Natalie beginning to work with us.
Correct.
The, as the, as the meeting continued, we determined we had. I'll boil this down somehow. We had determined that we had already done that work in the prior year, that the chairman would dig that out of his archives and find those things.
Correct, that's what we decided on at the end of the last meeting.
That's what we talked about in number two here.
That's how that number two was resolved, actually. It wasn't open ended.
Well, I just, and I think it's important for Natalie to know that we're just in brush that suggestion off.
Her suggestion, which came in by email, was to go through the town plan and see what elements had to be reworked, what were seriously in need of rework and what was less serious.
Rosemarie had asked everybody at the prior meeting to go home and go through the five of their five top priorities.
But she never sent us the email until.
We never got the email.
Right, until after.
Rosemarie's the only one who got the email, and she wondered why she was, actually, but then we discussed it anyway. But it wasn't about just redoing sections that need work. I mean, oh my God, you know. You know, it was about our five priorities, which is very different than the things that need rework. They could be the same, but they don't have to be.
A clear discussion about the five priorities at that last meeting, I know that, so.
The meeting chaired by Rosemarie.
Correct.
That wasn't the last meeting. I chaired the last meeting.
Right.
You did, and that's where the discussion of the prior meeting occurred.
Right.
You've succeeded in.
Julie, you got all that?
Gummings up.
I give up.
I, I think we have to reflect in there that based on the prior meeting that Rosemarie chaired, that she had asked or received an email that we go back over the five priorities. We determined at the meeting chaired by Sid, the last one, that we didn't need to do that because it had already been done and that Sid was going to go back through the archives to find everybody's five, and then the consensus of everybody's five combined.
On September 9th, 2014 minutes, that are special, we did the top five goals.
Great, no, no, that's what we said, right?
That was September.
That's what we said.
Aye.
Yes, we did the five.
Yeah, and we all knew that at that meeting.
Right.
I'm just saying that number two under other business should reflect the fact that we had that discussion, that we weren't shirking our duty as requested by Natalie Sheen. That we actually had done this, and that was a discussion we had at that meeting.
There's the list of the five goals for everybody.
I know, I know that you have them. I'm just saying that we need to change our minutes here to reflect the discussion of that. Are you ready?
You had a lot from this before.
Okay, let's boil it down. Let's boil it down.
Now I pay attention.
Under, under number two.
How about this September something, something meeting gave us the five goals that we had as an answer to this, and just leave it at that? We decided we had done them.
Fine, I like what he said.
Yeah. We decided we had done them, never mind.
Fulfilled the request at the.
Never mind Sid looking for stuff.
This is a very well-run meeting.
I think it has to be in there, but I apologize for not.
I want you to tell, I want you to tell the secretary what it is that you think ought to be in the minutes.
For, for. That we had a resolution of this. And that this just reflects since the discussion of the town plan at the prior meeting, or Natalie's request to go through the town plan, we had already done that two or three times, and then Natalie had specifically requested of Rosemarie to have us go back and list our five top priorities. Our discussion at the last meeting was, we had already done that as of September, whatever date you had. That's all. That's all, that's all I think should be reflected in there. There is no mention of any of that discussion that we ended the meeting with.
No, because we were supposed to come back with the sections as she.
Would you amend, would you amend the minutes of the last meeting by adding the phrase that Mr. Slattery just dictated?
And I'll help you with that after if you need it.
And as amended.
You need to editorialize it.
May I have a vote on accepting the minutes of that meeting as amended?
I so move.
And there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next item on the agenda is a guest, and again, we have a guest. Blake is here, showing. Resolved.
Yes.
Welcome back.
And a certain, and a certain amount of ability to absorb pain.
Right, he's still willing to sit here.
He wanted to come back and get the flavor for these things.
Do we have any mail, Julie?
We have a whole one to move.
Other than Christmas cards? Could be a check.
Be great. That'd be great. I'd like that. We drove on just shortly over Route 7 at Bedard Brothers last Friday. They have a couple of nice 2500s. Problem is, all the unsound, big unsound, half tons.
Excuse me, but you two are being recorded talking about the truck, no offense.
Well, we were waiting. We were waiting for you to.
Waiting for you to read the mail.
You were sorting the mail.
Well, you two are shitty. You're about to disturb me. The Town of Williamstown zoning board of appeals has a hearing on Thursday, December 18th for San, for a petition of Sand Springs Recreation Center for two small professional office spaces located at 158 Sand Springs Road. Then we have from Lake Enroachment in Shoreland permitting regional contact changes, which I got in as an email. And it's four pages, and it shows the Shoreland Permit Program and then the contacts. And we have a new contact person now for that.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah.
I'll email that one to you also.
Oh, good. If you're going to email it, then I can look at it right now.
Then I have the BCRC Regional Commission Holiday Open House Friday, December 19th, 12 to 2 at Bennington BCRC, which I emailed you guys also. And then another notice for Town of Williamstown ZVA, minutes from the Lawrence and Carolyn Kaplan. So we got copy of their minutes for that one, and RK Miles, which we have our decision notices for that. And then we have the link to the December VLCT news, which I have, and then we're going to talk about the membership thing after for the mail. That's my mail.
Can I see that, so I can let Doreen read that?
It's in there somewhere. I think it's highlighted in pink anyway.
Concerns her. So you leave the country for just a short amount of time.
That's my mail.
To change the law.
I don't see anybody here to make any public comment, do you, other than talking about the truck, which you.
We could talk some more about the truck.
We'll do that later.
Unless Blake has some reflections at this time.
Okay. Is, are you doing the ZA monthly log?
Yeah, it's not available. I didn't leave it this week at this time, so.
Why isn't he here?
He's hitting his back.
He's what? He hurt himself?
Apparently.
I don't know. No, that's a good excuse.
Do you have, do you have a proposed budget?
I have our budget from last year, but I didn't know if we wanted to because last year we went under expenses for, well, we added 10,000 for expenses. And I was trying to, I have my budget somewhere of my things. But this was our last year's budget we had, where we tried to get the extra 10,000 for.
The town plan, and we did not.
However.
Already come through us. Remember you and I had several meetings, I thought they finally agreed on it.
No, we actually were allowed for, under expenses, we were given 3,200.
Capital fund.
Right, but they told us we could take that out of the capital, but we had.
But we can't count it as our, on our expenses.
But we actually had, um, nothing for wages, 25 for mine, 200, and then we had 3,200 for expenses. So that's actually what we ended up.
And putting aside the question of whether we're going to have to print a new town plan, which we're not going to have to do this year, how did we do during the fiscal year with 3,200 dollars for expenses?
We haven't used it yet because we still have six more months to, we have until.
We haven't used any of it yet, so we can't even gauge over a 12-month period what would probably be used.
And you, and you, you don't use it for newspaper publications?
Yes, that's where that will come from, however, we have.
That's if we have a public hearing.
Right.
But you don't normally, on a monthly basis, incur newspaper publication costs for noticing, for warning these meetings? You just post them at the various places?
However, because you will notice that last couple of times our meetings haven't been in the paper because we were told that if they have room for our meeting notices, it will get put in the paper. If they don't have room, we don't have it.
Is that something we used to pay for?
We never had to pay for it before. We only have to pay for like our public hearings and stuff, so as of right now, we haven't had our meetings in there yet. Several people, several towns and stuff, unless they have room, so the lady told us from the beginning.
May I ask a question? What happens to the 3,200 for printing and everything if we don't use it by the end of the fiscal year?
It gets rolled back over to the.
It goes into the general fund.
To the general fund, and so we would have to request that again?
Yes.
Yes.
If we don't think we're going to use it in six months, which we pretty much know we're not going to?
Well, we should, well, depending on if we do our public hearings, if we start doing our sections, if we go sections of the town plan, like we picked section one, we can do.
Public hearing for each section?
Yeah, because you have to warn that as a public hearing. If we did it in sections, we could do it that way.
14 or 15 warnings to the newspaper, right?
In average warning, or when I do a meeting notice, like for the DRB and stuff, it's usually 55 dollars.
Is this, didn't this one cost us more in our prior public warnings?
That one cost 1,100 dollars because we had to print the whole.
Print the whole thing, and then we.
Outline of like the table of contents.
Did we find out later that we didn't need to, that we could have broken that down?
We chose, yes, to.
Table of contents of what?
When we changed the.
The town plan?
No.
No, it was designed.
Were we re-adopted?
When we did the zoning bylaws and subdivision regs into one booklet.
I see.
That was the last time we had public hearings.
And that, it cost, not only because you got to warn it three times, so we had to pay the 1,100 dollars.
For the large.
Three times because it was a learning.
So we have to be careful about that with this town plan, if we have to do legally similar type posting or blow through the budget.
Yeah, we have to do certified mailing, though. We have to do certified mailing for that, only to their butters and stuff.
When does Clint need this, like yesterday's Clint, not Clint? When, when do they need this, like the board, the select board yesterday?
Um, no, Friday.
Oh, okay. Plenty of time.
Yeah, we have until this Friday.
A little special meeting on the 24th of December.
The 19th they have to do.
Well, you're not busy that night.
So.
Well, should we consider a proposal for everything but the 10,000 dollars? Send it back up as is, um.
The question is whether we, the question is, well, if we take out the 10, it won't be 15.
Do you have another copy of the budget?
I got the 10 to be five, right?
Yeah, so the question is whether we should advocate for a raise for Julie.
Please don't.
No, don't.
I am so good for the year. I really am.
Okay.
We don't, last year we didn't put any money in for salary for compensation for the board members.
But they sent it to us anyway.
Right, but I thought that this year they were, it was going to all go to Julie.
We tried that, and then it did. They would, they would not let us do that.
So, just, just, just so we have it on the record, last year's budget for the wages for the planning board members, the planning commission members individually, we budgeted zero, 2,500 dollars for Julie's compensation as secretary to the commission, 200 dollars for postage expense, 3,200 dollars for expenses, and 10,000 dollars for the town plan consultancy about which you and I went to see the Board of Selectmen, and the initial response was that they would set it aside in the capital account if we needed it, and.
So it doesn't appear in our budget then?
It did, it did not show up at the end of the day in our budget, that's correct. So our budget would be 5,900 dollars if we budgeted the same amount this year. Absent the 10,000 dollars.
Right. Well, looking at what we're going into in a real official way now, because we have these people and we're going to have to start doing things with the town, do we feel comfortable just leaving it at that amount then?
The 5,900.
Correct, because that's, that was last year.
And being at the mercy of the capital fund.
Right.
Well, we were last year because we were told we could not have it as an expense, so when they said it'll be there for you, even the, the prior select board, we said, okay, the new select chairman has said it's there, we'll honor that. So I'm confident that they're not going to allow us to hire Natalie and company up there, Landworks, and then renig on their promise to pay that.
I'm not expecting that they would.
So is your question, do we need more on top of what's already been allocated in the capital fund for us?
Yes, for the warnings, for other potentially unforeseen circumstances because, and expenses because of what we're going to be doing.
Well, good question.
And it is, it is likely, well, it's not likely that we will in 2015, fiscal year 2015, ending next June, have a major publication or public meeting expense in the next year, for which this is 2016. Ending June of 2016, we are likely to have some expense.
Right.
Now, there's been a report that we were, Bratapar Reformers says we were only granted 7,000 dollars, correct?
I saw 9.7.
Yeah.
Right, so we're.
Almost 10.
What did we apply for?
Three, three dollars short.
What did we apply for? Refresh my memory.
20.
20.
Well, we have, we can, we can apply in another year.
Right.
We can spread this out over two years.
So then this can cover us for the, for the balance, and then?
So what's already there, plus 5,900, should cover us for the next year. Then when we're sitting here a year from now is when we have to go back to the select board and say it's going to be an extra 10 or 15 to finish this.
So are we comfortable with that?
I don't think we have any choice, actually. No, I'm not comfortable with that, to be honest with you.
Right, but I don't expect our expenses to be the same as they were the past 12, you know, I'm going outside of the fiscal year, but the past 12 months, I don't expect them to be the same going forward. The next six months will be what they are until the end of the fiscal year, and then the next 12 months will be something, again, as you mentioned. So I don't expect it to be the same. And then, you know, I don't know who's, you know, if we're going to be at the mercy at that point, if we need. And if we request and we get granted and we don't use it, as you say, it just goes into the general fund. So is there a downside with having a little cushion?
Asking for a cushion now.
That's all I'm saying, so.
For fiscal 2016.
For sure for them, I mean.
That's what the budget.
No, I understand. So that's six months to 18 months from now.
Correct. I just don't know how to anticipate what the expense would be.
Of course, that's why we set up a budget and we, we just, you know, you have to kind of wing it.
It is, for lack of a better.
Well.
No, what else can you do?
What else can you do?
I would ask to do the 3,500 in the expenses, only because in 2015, 2016, budget, we have to do our bylaw book again. To update our book again.
What, timeout, timeout.
Well, what was the numbers on?
We just finished the book.
2011.
She's talking 16?
You have to do.
What did we just finish prior to tackling this? We just redid.
We just redid this.
We just did our book, and it was for 2011, is our dates on this, so.
Dated, we just finished it though, right? We just adopted.
We will have to redo this in 15, 16.
Are you kidding me? 2011 is when we finished that?
Thank you.
Yes. And because our time book is five years for that, and then you have to update.
Because we worked for a year of them.
So when is the new version of this due? Do we have to do that?
As soon as this, this.
But that's not a date.
Town plan is five years. This is every two to three years.
So you're just maintaining we keep 3,500 for printing expenses in the budget line?
Yes.
For this budget that we're doing now?
Yes.
Anticipating that we're going to have some printing costs somewhere? Okay, I'm, I'm fine with that. So when you change that, now 3,500 added, what did we have in there, just a thousand?
No, we had 32, so if we increase it to 300, we get.
So it'd be 5,300?
63, right? 305.
We were at 5,000 and you want to add 300 dollars more?
No, we were 5,900.
You're right. So 6,200, add 300 to it.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we send a budget in with those adjusted items for 6,200 dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Explanation again, just.
Printing.
Just.
Additional printing.
Additional printing.
Potential printing, and pretty sure printing.
Potential printing.
Pretty, pretty, pretty darn sure there's going to be some printing.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think before we turn to the town plan, let's talk about what we should do in light of the special, the legislation that was adopted that's reported in the Vermont News where it, because of an act of the legislature which passed in 2014, apparently, planning commissions such as this one, which are not quasi adjudicatory bodies, may not have alternative alternate members. They may only have pure, honest, regular members. So I think what we ought to do is to advise the appointing authority, which is the Board of Selectmen, of that fact, and with the consent of Ms. Forni, who is here, and Mr. Dewey, who is not, ask that they be appointed as regular members instead of alternate members, and do we throw Blake's name in the hopper, Blake?
Yeah.
Okay, because we can have up to nine, so we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and Blake is nine. and Blake is nine.
Right.
So I, I would.
Yeah, I need, I need to talk about this because when I, when I came on this, what, about almost three years ago, I think, I could never have foreseen my circumstances back then as to what they are today, and I just don't feel like I can make the time commitment. I'm already got plans for the spring and for next fall, no, but to not be here.
You don't have to.
So I, no, I think, I think this is probably a good time to do it, is to, to say that I've enjoyed doing this, but I really think that given.
I don't think she should get out that easy.
My time is not, it's more there than here.
We had understood.
And it's gonna be more, if anything.
We had understood by some, um, device of which I'm uncertain, that alternate members don't have a term, the rest of us do. We get appointed, we have a term, and then we re-up or not. But the two alternates don't have a listed term.
Term of endearment.
The term of endearment.
That, that term, how long is the term for?
Three, three years.
Aren't we four?
I think it's at least three.
I think.
Is that four really?
I think the planning commission is four years.
Well, I can.
It's in the book, it's in the town book, I think that it, it builds, I think it's three at first and then it goes to four when you've been around for a while. Appreciate that, by the way, but you also don't have to answer tonight.
Tonight's, uh, tonight's a good time to answer, it, it is, it really is.
It sounds like she's been thinking about it.
Yeah, and I have been thinking about it, and I brought it up, and I brought it up back at the end of the summer and.
Let me just tell you what the statute says. The statute says that the length of the term of the planning commission members shall be determined by the legislative body of a municipality.
Correct.
Any member may be removed at any time by unanimous vote of the legislative body. Any appointment to fill a vacancy shall be for the unexpired term. So, Doreen, are you telling us that? A, you're telling us you don't want us to put your name in as a permanent regular member? Are you telling us more than that about your anticipated term of service?
Well, if I'm not gonna be a full member, that I'm not gonna be. I'm not gonna be an alternate.
Well, I mean, that's what the new information.
So, ending tonight.
Ending, I, well, I guess tonight, I haven't thought about it being tonight, but I really enjoy doing this.
Two week notice, I'm sorry. Here's what I would suggest.
But we are four years.
But I have a suggestion.
You wanna stick, stay around till March?
Well, I'm not gonna be here.
She can't vote on anything, even if she stays. Okay, even if we have a zoning board of appeals process and we're acting in a quasi judicial fashion, they can't have their alternatives served when carrying out their legislative planning duties such as adopting, amending, or repealing the town plans or zoning bylaws. She can come as a member of the public anytime and, and speak up in the, in the proper course of the meeting. She couldn't vote anyways on anything, so.
I could come back as a member of the public.
Why would you wanna do that?
Public.
Right, do I have, do I have a motion to submit to the appointing authority, Board of Selectmen, the names of, the name of Pete Dewey and Blake as regular members of the panel of planning commission in light of this legislation.
So moved.
Blake, did you wanna speak about something about your term?
The, uh, four-year term, I'm just not a hundred percent sure, cuz I don't know if it's gonna be a four-year term.
See, if we had alternatives, they could fill that when you left, but.
If it was to be, say, like a year or two year, because if I have to go and school in different state.
I understand, I understand, and I think in that event, you would be well advised to submit your resignation to the appointing authority if you, but I think if we're gonna put your name in as a regular member.
See what kind of term.
Your term will be four years because that's what our secretary has said.
Technical, right.
But you can, you can certainly resign if that is your determine, you know, if you're going to school in another location, that's.
We have to check the legality of it, but we've even had official leaves of, of absence too.
Right.
We have.
And, and the statute says that the majority of the members have to be residents of the town. That means at least some of us don't have to be residents of the town.
Oh, the majority, that's right.
Good point.
Okay, I have asked for a motion.
I'll, I'll move that we get.
Okay, any further discussion?
Just that we should let the select board know, is there throwing names around because they can appoint whomever, whomever they want, they still think they can appoint alternates. We should let them know in a letter to Julie. No alternates, okay, so it's gonna be prefaced by, since we can no longer under this, okay, all right, fine, no more discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you. Doreen, that's too bad.
Yeah.
But we understand and.
But that's my point, come here and, you know.
Uh, cuz I really have enjoyed doing this, but I have been giving it a lot of thought and I, I wasn't gonna do anything tonight, but it seems like this is a good time.
Well, we, I think we just soon get rid of the alternates because we're not supposed to have them.
We're afraid we'll get busted.
Feel in good conscience that I could give the time.
One thing I will say, it's been a pleasure having you on here. And you've got some great ideas about this town plan, and I don't want those to just go away because of this change, so. You could stay somewhat involved with this and come to the public hearings and everything.
Oh, yeah, I would do that.
Let, let us know what's on your mind. Okay, way to go, Julie, you really messed things up.
I'm sorry, but I.
I used to have a secretary that reads this stuff, I tell you. Sometimes we don't like what she reads.
Okay, turning to the town plan and some things that we can do before meeting with Natalie Steen. I think we we had put together a list of the five priorities for the town as we had imagined them and collected them. And I don't know, Mike, I have a different memory from you. I don't remember going through the existing town plan and saying this section is okay and this section needs wholesale revisions. Do you think we did that?
I think we did it, um, not in an official agenda like that. I think each committee that broke off and took its three or four sections, looked at those sections and said, that one might stand with a couple of changes, this one's gotta be thrown out.
But I believe there was no consensus and we never came to the table as a unit, as a total, as a group, we never discussed that.
Exactly.
And I think we ought to do that. So let's take a couple of sections and start.
Okay.
Ta-da.
Well, I did sit down at my kitchen table this morning and I wrote this off. I wanted to do my homework, you know, so I did look through it, but this is just my thoughts, but of what minor updates versus completely rewrite, and then there was one in there that had so many sections to it, I thought some were minor, some were complete. And don't ask me how I came up with this, except there were just sections that seemed like.
They didn't fit anymore.
Doesn't work anymore. This, or this really needs to have a lot more information in it.
When you have minor updates and complete updates, where do these, and they fall in the middle of those?
That section I thought had some that were fine. Oh, they all probably have some that are fine. Anyway, that's what I did. But I didn't really break it down. I spent time on it, but not that much time. So maybe just, just start.
Blake, have you had a chance to read the town plan?
Yeah, well, I didn't read all of it, but I've read most of it and I looked through a lot of it.
Okay, just, I was just curious for the sake of this discussion. Doreen has pointed out that, uh, minor updates, uh, the introduction could probably be tweaked, the end, land use plan, housing needs. Uh, section one of housing needs, I think that means.
Oh, no, cuz then we were asked to prioritize what we thought.
That's number one.
So I thought housing was really important, business and industry and energy. But so I just, now, those, again, those are just.
Why don't we have Doreen read this into the record?
I agree.
And give your gloss on it, what you intend by those numbers and so forth. Can you take notes of, of what Doreen is gonna?
Can I copy it real quick?
Sure.
See, you can't leave.
See, I've done my homework, I think. I, I'll certainly come to the open meetings and.
Just wanna know too, when we have committee meetings, who's, who's gonna, who's gonna play the bagpipes at those meetings is, you know. No one left here qualified for that.
Cornet, the cornet, I'm learning how to play the cornet.
Are you really? I was gonna say, interesting two choices. Got an extra. Okay.
Okay, so what I did here on Natalie's recommendation that we prioritize, what we feel each one of us would, would be the important, um, sections for the town to look at. And then to also state what sections individually we would think needed minor updates or a complete rewrite. So with that in mind, under minor updates, I thought, uh, the introduction, one point oh, that section, minor updates. Uh, three point oh, under land use plan. I, and I guess the way I, I coupled the, or broke these out was that some just seemed like they still needed some tweaking, some additional information, and some seemed like they needed a lot. So it's, I didn't really, I can't really break it down more than this. Again, under minor updates, five point zero, housing needs. Ten point zero, transportation, eleven point zero, historic resources and preservation, and twelve would be recreation. So those are all under minor updates. Uh, complete rew- rewrite, uh, two point zero, population. There are a lot of statistics in that population section that are so out of date, and I don't even know what we would wanna have in there now for statistics that would be pertinent to.
Or is it even needed?
Well. Natalie did say that our idea of wholesale departure from the format and not including a snapshot of what we have now is a mistake in vision, and she said you've gotta put that in, so. We are gonna have to have statistics about populations, it's just gonna have to be more current statistics about population.
And that seemed like more of a complete rewrite.
But it probably always is, I mean, in terms of the numbers, at least.
Yeah.
Right.
And then four point zero residential development, um, again, under complete rewrite, six point zero, business and industry. Eight point zero municipal finances, nine point zero the municipal management, and thirteen is energy. And then sort of in the middle of this, I put seven point zero, which is community facilities, services, and utilities, which is a lot. And again, there were things in there, items that I thought probably are fine the way they are, but it seemed like there were equally as many that probably needed to, to be, uh, rewritten and, and updated, so I put that one in the middle.
Nice work. Some of the committees um, completely agreed with this, by the way, and some had, I know you and Rosemary had up-to-date notes on the work that you had done on one committee. I think you and Jordan and I probably had some but not updated. But a lot of it agreed very much with these things, almost in this same order. So I don't know if we still have notes from committees that have started some of this breakdown, going through the sections. And se- and there were actual suggestions at one point. I know one of the committees, yours, did come to the table and report. We had a consensus on theirs. I don't think the rest of the committees did. So do we just start over again?
Well, I, I, I redid, um, the land use plan section and, and reworked it mostly to make editorial changes, not to make substantive changes.
This is back then.
Way back.
Yeah, right.
One, a year ago.
Oh, well, two years ago, anyway. And then Rick and I met on a number of occasions, a couple of times on tap, and talked about the land use plan, and that became more of a discussion about things that we thought we wanted to see planning promote. Results that we thought wanted to see planning promote, like sidewalks and things like that. Better organized, organized municipal spaces that could have both housing and, and commercial uses and things like that. And we never really reported back, we never gave a work product to, back to the planning commission to be considered. And.
I have a lot of those notes.
Yeah, I do too.
Right.
Now, don't throw anything out.
That's why I have this immense thing here because everything goes in this.
I stopped taking everything with me to every meeting and, but I, I do have them.
I sit on it on the way here to refresh my recollection.
Sure, work, does it work?
But I think this is, this is, I think this is what Natalie was looking for, was this kind of prioritization and.
That's right. Then she might lay out how we tackle it, right?
Yeah.
Like, here's your, here's the next step, here's what you need to do, whether it's breaking to committees again or groups and say, you know, who wants to champion this part, not part?
I mean, one of the things that we haven't done is, we haven't done, we haven't updated the basic research. And the information has to be presented, Natalie has told us that, so I think we can start on that process.
You mean population, things like that?
That's a purely clerical, uh, situation, right? Right, right.
I did that at one point where I sent letters to like the B C R C, like the wrestling squad fire and for all their input.
You have it?
It's a few years ago, but I can just.
B C R C ought to be able to tell us exactly.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I had wrote, written all that out, but then when we started this, it went into a, a folder like yours.
Okay.
But I still have all that stuff. So I can work on another draft that we're updating and cast for their info. Again.
Can I borrow that for a minute? Yeah, just for a second. I promise next time I'll bring my copy.
Can I do this now?
Yeah.
You may ignore my editorial.
We don't have any, we have not had any copies of them in the long run.
You have this electronically.
Yes, that's how I got.
I was gonna say, why don't you send it to Blake electronically, or do you, would you prefer electronically or paper?
This is Blake's, isn't it?
That is Blake's.
Right, right, he's already got it.
I put it in your office, but.
Well, if, if I, if I may, I, I think that we might, regarding two point oh and the population and then, uh, trends and you know, B C R C has to have that information. It's probably where Peter and the gang got it, right?
Yeah.
So, might, might you write to Jim Sullivan? Or Natalie may have it or be able to find that.
But what I did was, I wrote, I went through the book, each section, by section.
Yes.
I sent a letter to the people addressing each section, like the B C R C, and I got all their feedback. When I did it.
You did get their feedback.
Well, but it's been.
But it's a couple of years old.
A couple of years old. Because we did it with Natalie and David. The last time we did our book, because that's the last time we, our book was updated.
Since it's just research that they need to do, they probably have it all in one place. If they could provide us, uh, two point oh through, uh.
I'll ask them to do the sections like I did.
Yeah, two point oh, two point one, two point two.
Well, right.
Have, ask them to update it.
And I think that brings up a point, a question I have, what are our expectations, what do we expect from them in terms of the level of work that they will bring to the table, besides just some advice, you guys go do this, go do that?
Right.
I mean, what will they actually accomplish and do for us?
If I may, I think that they're, they're clearly going to provide that type of information.
Right.
But since we've hired a consultant, they're probably gonna have, they're probably gonna anticipate that we're gonna rely more on the consultant for the rest of it, right?
All right, my question was, what should we expect of the consultant? That's what I meant to say. Right, what is our, they're being paid, and what is our expectation of what they should provide?
Well, I don't think, I think we should, I think we should get Natalie here to talk about that. But I, before we get her here, I think we ought to do the preparatory work.
And get that to her.
And, and, put it together and send it to her and say, this is, A, our joint analysis of what has to be redone and what can remain the same. And then invite her to come down and say, all right, now that you've given me what you think are the priorities, here's how I think you ought to start dealing with them. And some of the statistical stuff, I think we can start working on right away.
Well, you were talking about what we were kind of doing at my house and talking about what we'd like to see in the town plan and the sidewalks and this and that. I think a lot of what we need to do is starting off with things like that and build them into a format. It's almost like it's a wish list, but it's gotta start, that's part of the deal, I think, is to say, these things are missing. We'd like to see X, Y, and Z happen. Whether it's, you know, the bike lanes, the shoulders, the sidewalks, the...
Sure, that's the vision.
It's the vision. So it may not be in here for us to just redo or update. It may be, it may be for us to actually invent those topics, 'cause they don't appear, certainly in our town.
No doubt, I agree. And in addition to the 11 or 12 mandated...
Mandates, right.
There could be others, there are others in here. So we may be striking an entire section and creating a new section.
Right.
Well, we have, we have to have all 13 sections.
13, that's whatever the...
It's 13, okay.
Yeah, but he's saying that there could be something either totally rebuilt or in addition to...
Right, you know, what we like to see there is not addressed here at all.
Right, it didn't exist when they created this document.
Correct, right.
And it doesn't fit into any of the 13 mandated sections.
Flood resilience stuff is all completely different.
There you go, for one.
Right.
I have, um... No, that's not what it is, never mind, okay. I was looking for that list of the mandates.
Well, I can...
Yeah, you got that.
I'll get that for you.
And there were 13, I thought it was 10, it's 13, okay.
It was actually 13, but I thought we could get rid of a couple, if I wasn't mistaken.
I can't believe I left my town plan at home.
Yeah, I feel the same way.
Why do you want to ruin your town plan?
I'm gonna just read through these. Plan for municipality may be consistent with the goals established in particular sections. One, a statement of objectives, policies and programs, that's how we start. Two, a land use plan. Then they break that down, and they say it has to have a map, a statement of present and prospective land uses, and so forth.
For instance, is something like the new floodplain regs, is that going to be amended, that will amend the prior?
Yes.
It'll change the maps in our town.
Absolutely.
Yes, it will.
After Irene?
Right, right.
And, and it does have to talk about open spaces reserved for floodplain, wetlands protection, other conservation purposes, and so on.
Forestry.
I actually think I'm gonna ask, at the end of this, I'm gonna ask Julie to copy this section and give us all copies of it. Transportation plan, it tells you what that has to consist of, map, present, future. A utility and facilities plan. A statement of policies on the preservation of rare and irreplaceable natural areas, scenic and historic features and resources. An educational facilities plan. Now, I think that is one area where the planning commission...
I agree.
Should probably just, for us, that's a relatively lower, we're not in the education business, I don't think.
Right.
A recommended program for the implementation of the objectives of the development plan. A statement as to how the plan relates to the development trends. An energy plan, a housing element. And these are all part of what has to be in the plan. I think just the table of contents for our present plan identifies each of these things, and I think we have to have all of these elements in there. And it goes, and it goes up to number 13.
And then see if any more are required.
Well, I don't think there are any more required by statute.
By our efforts.
Or our wish list can be, can build into some of these areas.
I think, I think they should be, I think the wish list should be slotted into whichever appropriate.
Probably find that most of it.
I think we have all the categories, we just don't have the specifics of our wish list, but the categories are here.
Yeah. Well, you know...
What section were you just at?
Part of residential... Part of residential development.
Because he didn't have a seat.
Jump around, do something.
Yeah, no, I hear you. If I were the bank, I'd probably...
Well, you know, we have to discuss it, that was one of the top items that we came to.
With the survey.
4382.
That, those days have...
Title 24, 4382.
Not gonna make everybody happy with that discussion.
No.
But it has to be discussed.
Well, based upon that, it's not a matter of opinion, it's just a matter of fact, isn't it?
Comes a matter of fact.
Yeah.
I wasn't listening, what'd you say?
Certificate of occupancies, things like that, have to be built into residential development or housing.
We had so much feedback on the survey about that, that we have to address it. And Jimmy was talking about, you know, banks now, and I guess you would know this, that, you know, reneging on mortgages, if you don't have to say yeah, you know.
You made a good point, back when you said you built a whole house and nobody ever visited you. And this person I was talking to, just last night, he said, I got an awful problem with a bank. I had to go re-around because they want a CO, what's your CO? What's your CO? Final doesn't have one. Somehow in the world, they didn't care if final didn't have one. If you want final money in your construction loan, you gotta show us CO.
They'll just say, we won't do business in POM.
Well, they just found another way in Opa-. Luckily, luckily the guy has money.
That'll be good for our future, what do you think?
When the banks won't work with our residents.
Julie, are you taking minutes or are you looking up something?
She's gonna copy these right now, CSA.
She's got the 13 points.
These are people you can bring in, actually, you know, they gotta testify, this is their problem.
Yes, and here, this one's 11, there's 11 of them.
That's what I just counted.
There's 11, that's why I just wanted to... 'Cause I thought there was at first 13, but then I'm like, I think, but I'll print that.
You can print those PDF pages.
That's why I wanted to double check the section, but yes, I am kind of paying attention.
So even though we have 13 sections in here, and I remember part of that discussion, there's 14 sections in here.
Right, but one thing is not the same as the other.
It's not.
14 is how you implement the plan.
Number 14 is how you, but implementation is one of the things that you had, you were listing when you were reading them off. Look, all this stuff on shorelands has changed now from the state's perspective. You know, that's in here under conservation and natural resources, we have to reflect that. I'm sure compliant with new state law, I think we just have to state that, we don't have to reiterate it in there. But the population trends projections, that's just data that BCRC should have, right? But then we get into the nitty-gritty, it's what do we wanna, are, are we looking at changing where businesses can be? Are we looking...
Dealing with the village.
Are we looking at rezoning again? Are we limiting the types of businesses from an environmental point of view? All of those things can be built into those sections. And I think when we came to that, we kind of boiled down, everybody had their five, and that was a, those were reoccurring themes.
I.e. the biomass, that was able to, things like that, that we don't, you know, okay.
Sure.
We got into this.
Right.
The book was already printed, and here comes, there's a couple of articles in the paper recently about the public service board having too much power for the solar panels.
About, about this one, under community facilities, services and utilities, you know, I mean, the Solomon Wright libraries in there are because the vision was to have a new addition and everything else. Town hall, maybe, I guess, we're gonna discuss town hall too, as part of community facilities, services and utilities. Should be interesting, Jimmy.
Too much money.
So you want us to match up those 11 with the 14 that we have? Do exactly what our distinguished former alternate has done, be prepared to discuss this in January?
And I think we should make a plan so that we can send something up to Natalie.
Prior to that meeting?
Well, certainly, she ought not to, we ought not to spend the time and money to get her down here until we have given her what she has expected of us, which is a prioritization of aspects of the statutorily required subject matters, and what we're gonna, what we think is important to redo and what we think is okay the way it is. I think almost everything should be edited. I think the, the present town plan is not well-written, and I think it can be much improved upon, even if the substance of it remains the same. But we should all do what Doreen has done, the one person who's going off the commission has done what she should have done.
I mean, we can't lose her.
You've already labeled.
Why not?
Okay, how about if we let Natalie know, this is the stage we're at, that we'd like to give her exactly what she asked for, but we are bringing to the next meeting? So I'm, I'm to understand now, all of us individually are gonna go through this, take notes, we're gonna basically do what Doreen did, maybe a little bit more depth, direction as to where it needs to go. And maybe Natalie wants to be part of that meeting when we're sitting here, opening that discussion up. Because...
I can ask her.
The things that I might want in a section, you might look at me and go, what are you, crazy or something?
Right, and she might have a good answer for that, or, you know, an experience about dealing with that, and that could be combined with this and whatever.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
You know, maybe she'd wanna talk to each of us individually before a plan, before we all come together, if we've done this, and say, so, you know, what are you seeing as a planning commission member that needs to be worked on? What can be preserved, what can be tweaked, what can be thrown out, starting over again? Maybe she needs to know that, or maybe it can be done in that next meeting, which really wouldn't give her what she asked. She wouldn't have the planning commission now having sent her what we think...
I think, I think we wanna make the best use of her time, and I think that means we should submit our first draft results before we invite her down here to listen to us.
So she'd probably come down in February if possible.
That's my thinking.
Okay.
So how many points do we each wanna bring, because we've gotta consolidate this thing, otherwise, you know, if we go too many, it's, it's gonna be a little tough.
Why don't we just pick our section, because we're only gonna, we have two years, 'cause you're only gonna get...
You wanna pick the same sections again?
No, I'm just saying, like, just work on, like, 'cause we have a year, right? And then we have the full year.
We always make a mistake when we say that, don't we?
No, I'm just saying, like, have all of us do the one, you know?
No, I don't, I don't...
I don't know how to explain it.
Try again.
Instead of having us all work on, on all of it, because obviously we have two years to do the whole book. So instead of just doing 1 through 6, or the fir-, you know, where's the... She said, like, the complete rewrite, or the minor updates, which were, like, the introduction, that, you know what I mean, like, have us...
No, I don't, but I think, if you're trying to say...
A couple of sections, instead of doing the whole entire book at one time.
What you're suggesting, I think, is that each of us, Lake on the one hand, Rick on the other, Jim on the other, each take sections 1 through 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, is that what you're saying?
No, she's saying, let's, for the next meeting, let's all take 1 through 4.
Let's all work on it together.
Together.
So the consensus is already built into the process.
Right, because we're not, obviously, we're not gonna have it all done in one year, 'cause we don't have the funding to do this whole book in one year. Like, do, like, half of it, you know what I mean?
I kinda agree with her.
Me too.
'Cause, 'cause I think that's a big part of it, the process is one thing, but the consensus is a big deal. So if we work on it together, I don't think it's gonna slow us down, 'cause...
All right, so you, you, is, is the suggestion then, that at the next meeting, we take sections 1, 2, and 3?
Fine.
3 is a very big section.
3 is a big one to swallow. How about 1, 2, and 4? We don't have to do it in a regular order. But maybe, but maybe we should, I mean, why, you know, it's, it's put that way, I don't know, it's, there's already a format.
Might as well do it in order. However, Doreen makes a good point, because they tie together in a funny way, back to it not being written and flowing. Yeah, I mean, energy tying to business, things like that, it ties to housing, it ties, you know, so...
Land use as a housing.
Well, how about this, can, can we work right now on just an order?
To identify which ones?
To identify an order that we would like to see?
We oughta come up with something, but...
Let's show something at the end. And, and Doreen is still here.
Or, or, or listens, or we take 1 through, through 4, and we work on, and we come back, and we discuss it. And then we take 5 through 9.
The question, the question is whether we're gonna do it here together, which is Rick's suggestion, or whether we're gonna come back at the next meeting.
It's actually Julie suggesting, I'm just seconding it.
Okay, hey, yes, and, and what are you saying is, should we change the order of it? And I'm saying, I, I think you can go through chronologically, and then realize you're gonna have to amend some of what you did in section 3 when you hit section 7. It's gonna say, wait a minute.
There's definitely gonna be overlapping, and, you know, and, you know, there's, that's definitely gonna happen.
Sure.
And, and it should.
But I like your attitude is that we both, we'll build consensus as we go.
Right.
We'll, I'll give it out.
You can make a note, when you bring your stuff back, say, oh, by the way, I took the liberty to read ahead to section 7, and I...
And this might reflect back to...
I've built in here in section 4 what I...
So you're allowed to actually do more?
Yeah, you are allowed to do more.
Okay.
In fact, you're allowed to do the entire thing, and bring it to us. Makes sense? 1, 1 through 4 for the next time, realizing number 3 is a big meaty section?
And it doesn't mean the next table of contents is gonna be in this order.
You don't need to rewrite it.
I wasn't suggesting that you change the order in the table of contents, but in terms of people going home and looking at a section for the next meeting, I think if you did 1 through 4, 3 is huge.
Yeah, it is.
So you could do 1, 2, 4, maybe 5.
Right.
What I would hope...
You could.
And then the next time, you could just do 3.
3, I think, is a baby in itself.
Yes.
Here's, here's my vision of what I think we should bring back, just like she did. 1, minor, minor tweaks, 2 or 3 recommendations, 2, minor tweaks, 2 or 3 recommendations. 3, boom, here's a list of things we need to discuss in 3, a list, not rewritten, we're not rewriting this for now. We're identifying what we think needs lots of work. And little bullet points as to what we think maybe needs doing, because that gives us the consensus that we sent to Natalie, correct?
Correct.
So you're not rewriting this when you go home. I don't, we're not looking for a rewrite from each person, then to have some of them thrown out and some of them kept.
Basically, what you're saying is for us to become very familiarized, write some notes so that the meeting is more fruitful.
Just like this, you know, a little more detailed about, there's, there's chapter 3, it's four pages, we've gotta, I think we've gotta address the following things. Bullet points, bullet points. And I'm reading them my bullet points, and he's saying, that's right, that's what I had, or no, what are you, we can't, we can't go there, here's why. Bullet points, bullet points. And I'm reading them my bullet points, and he's saying, that's right, that's what I had, or no, what are you, can't, we can't go there, here's why.
And she'll blow us all out of the water, cause she's into it all the time.
She'll absolutely, then begin to refine this and hone it, and tell us what to throw out and what to keep, and then we'll move from there.
So what sections do you want us to come back and report on next week?
Well, I'm not, I'm not the chairman. One through four, how's that? Too big? One through three?
I'm, I think one through three.
There's nothing better than the week between Christmas and New Year's, sitting down with the town plan.
No, I, I'm gonna do it in January, but I think one through three, not one through four.
One through three, we all agree. I'm fine with that. I don't think you need a motion for that, we just need.
And when we get to population.
I'm gonna do my letters.
She's gonna.
She's gonna do a letter.
You're gonna have numbers.
That's merely reporting.
Right.
Right, so, but, but i- i- is it as simple as that, or we're looking at, it's, there's trends.
No, you gotta talk about the trends.
Yeah, what you'd like to see, you have to address those things. Whatever the numbers are, they are.
Here's the trend.
Old age.
Right.
I'll do my.
See, and doesn't that then tell you the business and development and sidewalks?
It's the result of that, it becomes that, yes. Okay, just so I'm clear, the trend is what we're seeing, the trend of the population, how the population is moving?
If you look at it, it shows the U S Census Bureau, and it shows surrounding areas and how the population's moving. Who's staying, demographics, who's left?
So by the time we go over that, you will have the fresh numbers, Julie?
With the exception of Blake, we're pretty much.
Write a letter tomorrow, update my letter and send it out tomorrow.
Okay.
Do you want me to help you with that letter to the selectmen about members and alternates and things?
Yes.
I will have to submit mine by email, cause I'll be out of the country for the next meeting. But I will do that.
I think we should Skype you in.
Is this, yeah, is this the annual trip?
Not, not really, this is, I'll, I'll, I think for the next meeting, I'll be in Cuba, actually.
Oh, man, I used to smoke cigars, and I would ask you to smuggle some back, but I don't wanna see you in a Cuban jail or America.
So for the next meeting, we are going to each individually go through item, sections one through three of the present town plan. And A, make a determination as to what we think needs major work and what can be done with adapting and changing and editing what we have.
Perfect. Doreen's giving us all the boilerplate.
When's the, what's the date of the next meeting?
Yeah, you were. I just.
Yeah, you did. You did it on purpose.
And then, the plan is to keep working at this until we get to the end.
Correct.
And then, we will assemble it all and send it to Natalie Steen.
And I.
And I don't think we ought to have Natalie.
No.
Spend the time to come down here until we've done that.
Could we impose upon the chairman to relay that to her, what we've decided tonight?
Sure.
And she might say, oh, no, that's not the way you're gonna.
Then, then if she says no, no, then.
She'll have a good reason.
Yeah. All right, Julie, I'd rather, it's only eight twenty, so I'd rather work on that letter with you tonight, right now. Anybody else have anything else they wanna accomplish tonight?
I have a, a question that's not on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, and it has to do with the potential for a website for the town, and I know we bring it up from time to time. But I was meeting with some really good citizens of this town recently, and it was just brought up that there is so much that could be conveyed, and so much more transparency that this town needs, and if we had a website that was kept up to date, it could have all these things. And then somebody in the meeting brought up the fact that they thought it was a state requirement, should a town have a, a website, that all the minutes for all the meetings need to be posted on, on the website from all the municipal meetings, which I think is an excellent idea, so people know what's going on. And that might even include the town hall and any, any of those things, but it's really important for this town to have this.
We all know that.
No, I know.
How do you make it happen?
Selectmen addressed this last meeting.
I was gonna say, they were, somebody were addressing.
Oh, have they?
I was gonna say, they.
Pretty much, they, they were agreed that this person could put it together.
Right, and they were talking about having each person do their stuff.
So that's great, I, I.
You look at some of the, even the small towns in Vermont, they have a much better, we have nothing.
We have nothing.
She labeled, she labeled the towns and, yeah, this person.
So they, they heard a consultant?
Uh, pretty much.
To come in and do this?
Pretty much. They got her prices and how, what it would take to maintain it.
And, and just that point, I know all the meetings are public, any one of us could have been at that meeting to hear that, but we don't even know this, but if there was, if there was that facility, we would tune, we would know that. And if you're not nearby, you could tune into it for what, you can go to it. It's so important.
I do know in the, I don't even know who she is, but I know when Peter Hopkins worked on it, I emailed him all of our minutes, every time we met, and I did for the planning board and the D R B, and it was on the website when.
No kidding, isn't it?
We did it at the time.
And, and.
It was up and running for a while.
We looked today and it ended in oh nine, I believe. It hasn't been fed since.
Girl was very thorough, though. I was at the meeting, but she.
But I do.
So she knows her stuff. This is not her first rodeo.
Practicing in a state where every town does have a website, and every meeting agenda is posted before the meeting, and the minutes are posted, usually a month late, to be honest.
Okay.
Because they get signed at the next meeting, and then they get posted. They don't wanna post them until they're in final form.
Right.
But it is such a resource.
Oh, it's huge.
Everybody has their zoning bylaws, their subdivision regulations, the town maps.
And that was on.
The assessors' maps, the assessors' list, well, they call them listeners up here, but all the values.
They don't have to be trading in and out of the air.
This is, real estate transactions.
Sure.
Hello? I like to look at them.
It might save us salary, I don't know.
Application.
This is.
I can tell you on a real estate value, one just came in, and one property is getting nine, and I know you guys might.
You sure you wanna say this on the air?
Well, they got, it's public record.
Okay.
They paid nine thousand dollars per acre.
A recent purchase?
Yes.
We sold, we sold a Legion property for sixty-five thousand, one acre.
I don't know.
How many acres, how many acres?
It was twenty-eight, but I was horrified for.
The one, the one.
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for nothing, just land, I.
You, you should read some of the down county.
I'm horrified.
Real estate transactions.
With nothing, there's absolutely.
And this just happened?
Yes.
It's been trending that way, though.
It, it is pretty good numbers sometimes.
Amazes me.
I was hoping that we could get up something here for the election.
All right, we're just chatting now, let's, let's have a motion to adjourn, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Julie, let you and I work on that letter to the board of selectmen.
I forget it, you're then.
And thank you.
Yeah, Doreen. Thank you, it was really, really nice to work with.
Thank you.
You brought, you brought your, you brought your card.
I just wanted to show you that. That was my grandmother's list of phone numbers.
This, this was her grandmother's list of phone numbers.
Is there a Smithers in there?
And this is when I lived in Windsor, Massachusetts.
Oh.
And that was, she had my initials backwards. She says, S F Smithers, but that was our phone in Windsor, Massachusetts.